Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and then I'm feeling a little bit under the weather tonight, so I asked John to read the opening statement, so go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few items to cover before we get started, please sign in at the door if you've not already done so. There will be, there you will also find a detailed handout of the step-by-step procedure we will follow tonight. If you wish to take one, please put any electronic devices on silent mode at this time. Also, please note that all testimony is being recorded for the record. Members of the Planning Commission are appointed by the County Board of Commissioners. With one member from each of the five Commissioner districts, Land Services staff is here to assist the Planning Commission with its duties. Task of the Planning Commission is to hold the public hearing and to make a recommendation to the County Board of Commissioners for approval or denial of requests for conditional and interim use permits, rezones, plats, and ordinance amendments. In accordance with the state law and county ordinance, the burden of proving our request meets the criteria for approval rests with the applicant. There's a protocol for how we will proceed tonight. For each request on the agenda, we will hear a staff report, hear testimony from the applicants, then we will discuss and gather more information as needed. Next, I'll ask if there is anyone in the audience wishing to speak to the request. I will ask each party to come to the podium, state their name and address for the record, and give their testimony. Please be as factual as possible and direct all statements and questions to me. After all testimony is complete, I will close the public hearing portion of the process. Planning Commission will then review and discuss the case in terms of our finding of fact criteria as required by Minnesota statute and county ordinance. We will have a series of votes, discuss whether conditions be made, then there will be a final motion to recommend approval or denial to the County Board of Commissioners. After this final vote on your request, you may leave if you wish. The County Board of Commissioners will then consider the request and our recommendation at their next regular meeting and will grant or deny the request.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, we have one item on the agenda tonight, and that is Brenda Perlowski, 8944 200th Street, Little Falls. Application for conditional use permit to allow more than three dwellings within a quarter-quarter. Located in point of southeast quarter of southeast quarter, section 20, township 130, range 30, Darling Township. At this time, I'd ask the applicants to come up to the podium or up to this table. And then have a seat, and then please state your name for the record in the microphone.
Brenda Perlowski.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd ask Amy if she's ready with the staff report.
I am, Mr. Chair. Again, this is an application to exceed the allowable dwelling density located in section 20 of Darling Township. The ordinance reference for this request is section 604.9 and 604.14. Here's a plat map of Darling Township, and the red dot is the location of the parcel. And then here's the conditional use permit request received from the applicant. And then here's an aerial photograph of the property. And then some site photographs provided by the applicant. Again, here's another aerial photograph of the parcel outlined in blue, and then some will be oblique imagery of the parcel as well. The applicant owns and lives on this eight-and-a-half acre parcel in a home that was permitted in 1995. The county assessor has had a salvage value on the building to the west for many years. And then, so here on the right is the home that was permitted in 95, and then to the left of that is the salvage building. The Land Services Department was made aware that the salvage building was being remodeled as a dwelling. A first notice of violation was sent on November 17, 2023. The applicant followed up after receiving the violation letter and stated the building had been utilized as a dwelling before the new home was moved on the property in 1995. Since one dwelling per parcel is allowed and the permitting in 1995 did not acknowledge a home already on the property, it violates the land use control ordinance. Further, the allowable dwelling density of three dwellings per quarter-quarter would be exceeded with this structure coming back online as a dwelling. And then here's an aerial photograph of the quarter-quarter outlined in the hot pink lines, and then identification of the dwellings within the quarter-quarter. Item number four would be this additional home on the parcel that we're talking about tonight. The applicant requests a conditional use permit to exceed the allowable dwelling density of three dwellings per quarter-quarter, or 40 acres, and proposes a fourth dwelling in that quarter-quarter. If this permit is approved, the applicant will create a new parcel for the fourth dwelling. There is enough property to create a compliant parcel. 200th Street is a gravel township road, and that serves the property. A road approach exists to serve the potential dwelling. The applicant told the Land Services Department that the proposed dwelling has water service and a septic system. The Land Services Department does not have a record of the septic system serving the potential dwelling. The applicant attended a development review team meeting, and the development review team notes were included in your packet. Uses on adjacent parcels are primarily rural residences and crop field. There are no registered feedlots in the immediate area. And then here's a zoomed-out aerial photograph with the feedlot layer turned on. The red dots are deactivated feedlots, so they're no longer registered, and then the green dots are active feedlots. The applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives is in agriculture is goal A1, objective 6. Goal A2, objective 1. And then residential, goal B1, objectives 1 and 2, and 3. Suggested conditions if this is approved would be the property owner shall create a new parcel for the additional dwelling by May 31, 2024. The property owner shall submit a septic system inspection to the Land Services Department by May 31, 2024. And if the septic system fails inspection, a new system shall be installed by July 31, 2024. And the additional dwelling shall not be utilized as a vacation rental or any other income-producing property. 16 notices were sent. One comment and support of the request was received prior to the public hearing. That was from Alfred and Rhonda Mace, and they just stated that they were okay with this request. And then here are your conditional use criteria questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Amy. At this time, does the applicant have anything to add to what Amy stated in her?
No, I just, you know, I didn't actually realize that it was considered a salvage building. And so when I was doing it, I'd always thought it was my grandparents' house, and so I wasn't aware that I was doing anything wrong when I did that. And so we're just going to remodel it for my mom to live there, who is 92.
Okay.
That was the intention.
Excuse me. Okay, I'll ask this time if anybody on the Planning Commission has any questions or comments for the applicant or staff.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Dave.
On the proposed conditions, Amy, could you go back to those? The third one, shall not be used as a vacation rental or any other income-producing property. What is the reason behind that? I mean, you can own parts of land with residents on them and rent them out.
So what I'm talking about is short-term rental.
Okay.
So if you're going to advertise this on Airbnb or something like that where you have short-term rental, so I'm not talking about owning a home and renting it long-term to a family or to anybody else. This would be about short-term advertising on websites.
I was confused about that as well.
That does require separate licensing from Public Health in order to do a short-term rental.
Sure. I mean, it's kind of, the way it's worded, income-producing, that's kind of catches it all.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe.
That's what I meant.
Short-term added to that, yeah. Thank you for clarifying that. Also, for the applicant, what's the size of the house? Probably not relevant, but is there, how many bedrooms, baths? Is there a basement?
So we've made it into a patio-type home. There used to have a basement, but we've sealed up the steps to go down there, so it's no longer there. It's being made as a one-bedroom, one-bathroom, there is, you know, kitchen, living room, pantry, laundry room, and like a sunroom. So it was meant for my mother.
Thank you. And how much, how large of a parcel do you plan to create there?
How big is it, Randy? I think it's 30 by 40, I think, is all it is.
I mean, the parcel of property.
Oh, the parcel.
I think it's a minimum, and we may want to go bigger.
No, I mean, probably just the one acre, possibly two, depending on if I do have to put a different, something in, I'll just make it so it's allowable. I was looking at just dividing it.
Thank you.
Marv?
Mr. Chair, this question is more so geared to Amy because I was reading that it said there were numerous tarp buildings that needed to be permitted on the site. Do you see, go around the countryside, you see a lot of these tarp buildings that people use for temporary garages and whatever. Do they, these all need to be permitted?
Yes. They are defined as a structure, and so they do need to meet structure setback and need to be permitted. And so when we received the information about this, when we were out on site, there were several other buildings that hadn't been, that wasn't in my staff report so much as that was in the violation letter. And so she has permitted those.
Okay.
And I was not aware that the tents were supposed to have permits. I just didn't know that.
I didn't know that either. That's why I'm asking that question. The next question I have is, you've read these conditions, and I was writing down conditions I like, and then I were going through them, and they correlated what was put out here. Are you okay with these conditions?
I may need a little more time for that septic because I don't, I mean, I don't know if July 31, if it needs to be replaced. I would like to maybe have a little more time on that because she's not moving in there. I mean, right at this, so the problem, the reason my mom would be moving in there when her husband dies, she has nowhere to go. And so that's what we're working on. That's the main goal, that she'll have somewhere to be housed when that happens. I mean, he's still fine. He's in a nursing home, but he's of good health at the moment, so, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I would definitely make sure that it's taken care of if it needs to be.
Okay.
Prior to her living there.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Amy.
So when you get that inspected, we would want to have that inspected by May 31, 2024. If it fails inspection, by law, you must upgrade that within one year. So that would be the maximum amount of time would be one year from the date of a failing inspection that you'd have to upgrade that, and it would just become an enforcement issue if it's not done.
Okay, that's no problem. Thank you. I didn't know that either.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Amy.
So if you're looking at more time, how much time were you wanting?
I don't, I'm not, I mean, I don't think it would be past September, October, because I wouldn't want to be doing it when it's cold.
Well, it can't be done in freezing.
That's what I'm saying, so I would have to have it done probably by the fall.
Okay, so you're thinking still in 2024?
I'm sure hoping to, yeah.
Okay.
Would that timeline include?
Sir, why don't you, if you want to be part of this, you want to come up and sit up here, please? And then state your name for the records.
Randy Hippel, I'm helping Randy with this. My question was, the timeline, I can see if the septic was being used, but what if the septic is not being, if it's disconnected, would there be more time allotted then?
If you have a plumbed building that has water service to it, then you need to have a septic system. And so if the goal is to bring this online, we would not want to drag that out. But the thing is, is too, is if you get that system inspected and it passes, there, you don't, there isn't anything you need to be doing, so.
Oh, yeah.
So if you think about it, you got to have your inspection done by May 31st. So you almost want to make sure that you get it done in 2024 because probably if you wait until right out that year, that gets pretty tight because you're looking at the month of May to work on a septic system. You know, you ain't going to get into it in April or nothing like that, so. So we could look at possibly changing that by like maybe October 1st or something.
Yeah, that's what I was, that was kind of my timeframe, just monetary, and, you know, I'm doing this without any loans, so I'm just trying to pay for it as I go.
Because a lot of these are, this is set by other ones than our own, so.
Yeah, I understand that.
Marv, you have anything else?
I believe one more thing under conditions. Wasn't it a separate approach was also recommended in that condition?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Amy.
Within the staff report, I said there is already an approach off the road that's serving this, and my assumption would be you're going to continue to use that approach, and it would be included in the lot split that you're doing. So the current approach that they have would be what you're going to use?
Absolutely, yeah, and it has, my mom has been guarding out there, so it's been well, it's well-maintained. We mow the grass, we plant, she has her flowers, and we have the.
Part of the reason behind this is it probably won't be, in years to come, it may be sold off as a separate, so you want to go ahead and have a separate approach and everything else, so you're not digging yourself in a hole and creating an issue down the road, so.
No, it's always had a separate one because it used to be my grandparents' home, and so we've always just kept that up.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Marv. John, you have anything?
Mr. Chair, and this is for Amy. The whole purpose of having the three dwellings per quarter-quarter, where, what's the, what's the logic behind it?
So, Mr. Chair, within the agriculture zoning district, the ag, productive ag use is prioritized in that area. And so the more dwellings you have in the area, the more conflict you can potentially create with setbacks from feedlots and from, and taking productive ag land out of production. So that is the overarching reason why dwelling density is limited in the ag zoning district. Prior to last year, we required a variance to exceed the allowable dwelling density. And with the ordinance update, that shifted to a conditional use permit. And the reason why is because on a case-by-case basis, in some areas, it, the bar is higher to grant a variance than it is for a conditional use permit. And on case-by-case basis, the County Board wanted the ability to consider placement of additional dwellings in appropriate places in the ag zoning district.
Thank you, and if you can bring up this map, and this is why I asked the question. So if this is the logic behind, and Amy provided that, and this is the map that we're.
Which image are you wanting?
I think that's the first one.
This one?
Yeah, and you look at the first one, obviously, that's a set of mature trees there, so it's not like they're giving up any ag land. You're not taking ag land away, and she noted where the last feedlot or certified feedlot was. And just as you're putting all of these facts together and looking at the request itself, I just note that for the record, I wanted to understand what the actual logic was behind the dwellings per quarter-quarter, so. Thank you, Amy.
Okay, thanks, John. I guess, Amy, if you could, I'll give you a little time, and I'll talk about some other things. But could you pull, do you know what the distance is for that feedlot that is no longer in existence, that Greg Zilka one with the red dot?
The deactivated one? I can certainly pull that up.
Look that up and then all, so. Kind of what John said, we look here, we got, if you look across, there's House, there's quite a few houses in this area, and you go up the Twin Lakes Road or 22, go to the north, there's other houses. You can tell this has always been there. I'm actually a resident of Darling. I did talk to a couple of the people from Darling Township, a couple of their board members, Mike Vets Jr. and John Nelson, and then Jay Vets, or Jay Tody, who was supervisor. And kind of what their consensus was is if it has any bearing on this one or not, it's just in general for Darling Township that we have to remember that over half of Darling Township's landmass is enrolled into the Camp Ripley Buffer Zone. So there'd be a limited amount of expansion of residents or things like that in the future already. So their idea is that wherever we can kind of help out and allow some of these things, they're for it as long as it's within the rules. And we got 2,300 feet, Amy?
That's correct, and of course, that measurement would be from the nearest animal holding area if that were to be reactivated. But our setback for all tiers is 660, so.
Okay, now is my only concern with this, is we deactivated a feedlot, but Greg Zilka's up there in age, and someday in the near future, somebody else is going to own that, and I probably would almost guarantee that that would get to be a feedlot again. So it's plenty far away. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't. Nothing's really going to change other than maybe since 1995 or before, when, when was that?
1964 is when it was originally built.
When it was built, when was it quit, not used anymore?
So we use it every, so we've always used that house for like fam reunions and canning and that stuff. And my mom actually, I don't know if you can see the gardens, but anyway, she gardens up there. She comes in, has a cup of coffee, and, you know, so it's really hasn't been lived in since probably, my grandparents died in like 82?
Okay.
Something like that, so I suppose it would be then, and I was pretty young back then, so I wouldn't know the difference between a house and a, if it was salvage, I didn't know.
Okay, so it's been there for a long time. There's already established a driveway. If we get the sewer updated, get this fixed. When you do a project like that, Amy, are building permits required for that? Or not really being, it's a remodel?
No, since we do not enforce code, the internal renovation and even window replacement or siding replacement would not require any permitting from us.
So basically, everything they're doing is fine with the county, other than they have to have a conditional use permit and make sure that the septic system is up to date.
Essentially, we're looking at this as a conversion of use. And so we have recognized this with the permitting of that new dwelling, without recognizing that other dwelling at all, that was considered an accessory structure salvage building. And now this is a conversion of use, which we regulate two things, placement and setback and use. And so this would be a change in use, which is what we're really talking about tonight.
So change of use, other than that, I guess what I'm getting at is they're not really out of compliance in any of the ordinances or?
No.
You know, as long as the sewer's updated and then the.
Bringing that septic back online, yes.
Septic and then the use, okay.
Correct.
That's about all I had, I guess. You have anything else to add?
No.
Pretty self-explanatory. Do you guys have anything else to add before we go to the questions? Okay, then we'll go move on to the questions. Go ahead, Dave.
Public input.
Oh, yeah, I forgot. Thank you. Is there any public input towards this? Any public input? Any public input? Had asked three times, hearing none, we'll close this portion of the meeting to the public. And then now we'll go ahead and close this portion of the hearing to the public and move on to our questions. Question one, the use will not put excess burden on roadways, utilities, and public facilities such as parks and schools. We'll start with Dave.
Would that be me?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless your name's John.
My ear is a little far from yours.
Okay, sorry.
Let's see, approaches are already in place, no extra burden as far as approaches onto the, onto the main road there. Very minimal traffic, just another dwelling, if it were even to be sold and used by a family. Or it's not a very big house, so that's probably not likely, but it would still not add any burden to the existing road structure there.
Okay, anybody have anything to add to question one? If not, we'll move to question two. The request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in area. We'll start with Marvin.
I don't believe it will, and why I look at it this way is Clint had brought up a map, or Amy brought up a map, and Clint had a question about distance from the local, the closest feedlot. It was like 2,600 feet away, and that was a feedlot that was not even being used. But if it would, in the 60s, is the distance needed. It's ag here, and this piece of property has been here, and all it is is being remodeled and being used by possibly one individual. So basically, they are just making this building habitable, and it should not create any issues in that respect.
Okay, I'd just add that I, I'm a big proponent to this. We have a building site already with some buildings on it. They're going to refix up the building that's there on this building site. I think there's too many of these in the county that people just throw them aside and build somewhere new. By them going ahead and fixing up this and getting this, possibly this conditional use permit, it actually enhances the neighborhood and all the other stuff because it's going to be fixed up, and it's not going to be just thrown to the side and be a collapitated house that sits there forever, and then somebody moves on down the road and builds into a field where in the future, somebody else is going to own it. But here we got a structure that somebody else could purchase it now and then and not take up another field, so I guess that's where I look at that.
And we took it all the way down to the studs, which were true studs, and so we're trying to do it the right way as well.
Okay, question three, go ahead, Dave.
I'd just like to add that, you know, if we were to, able to plan these three dwellings per 40, this is the way we'd do it, in a group, rather than one in each corner. And so it has very little impact, or less, much less impact on potential ag expansion in the future. You know, feedlots and setbacks, so.
Good point.
So.
Good point.
Not detrimental to the use of others in the area, especially ag use.
Okay, question three, the use in the opinion of Planning Commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and the environment. Groundwater, surface water, and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. John?
It's clear there's no groundwater, surface water, air quality issues associated with this application. Marv referenced the distance of the deactivated feedlot. At this point, we're in ag zone, but we're not actually taking away any tillable or productive land, and we heard all of the logical points from Amy on the, on the reason behind the quarter-quarter and the number of dwellings, which I think everybody here has already referenced. There's no issue with the way this is being asked, requested, or currently positioned.
Okay, thanks, John. And I would add that with the inspection of the sewer, and then if it doesn't pass, getting a new one in there, that would take away any, that would also help answer this question, yes, so. Anybody else have anything to question three? Now move to question four, the use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Um, yes, in ag zoning, we allow three per quarter, but we allow a conditional use permit to do more of these. So it is allowed. Then when we look at what that's entitled, John got a definition from Amy earlier on why we do the three per quarter, and then also why we allow the fourth one or possibly even a fifth one. And Dave said earlier too, that made sense is they're all together. It's not going to affect, it's kind of been there for a long time. It's not going to affect anything in the immediate area because it's been there already. Probably not livable, you know, but the structure's been there. And I guess to me, structure's there, it's still, you know, that's, to me, it's usable, but. So yes, I think it is consistent with the purpose of the zoning ordinance and the purpose of the zoning district. Anybody else have anything to add to question four?
Mr. Chair, I want to reiterate what Dave pointed out. Mr. Chair, I want to reiterate what Dave pointed out, that this is part of the reason the ordinance was changed earlier for pieces of property like this.
Okay, thanks, Marv. We'll move to question five. The use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. Dave?
Yeah, the staff report, you know, lists the most, most applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives. And, you know, this parcel has not been used for ag land. It has been used for residential in the past. That use will not change, it won't impede on any ag use. That's, you know, the ordinance also states that, you know, we need to find places for people who want to live out in the country. And wherever possible, that that should be done without, as long as it does not impede the major use of the land, which is ag in this case. So a very small parcel, small house, need for housing in Morrison County. Seems like everybody's looking and hard to find affordable housing. So good roads, already been used that way. And with the conditions, they'll be right up to speed on all the ordinance. So I would say not in conflict with the plan or the ordinance.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Anybody have anything to add to question five?
I'd like to also say the applicant did a very good job of answering the questions, so you did a good job on working this one. We enhanced your answers a little bit.
I had a good teacher.
Okay. So then we'll move on to our voting on our questions. Keep in mind the conditions. The only thing maybe on the third condition, we'd maybe change that to October 1st instead of July 31st. Other than that, I'm kind of good with the conditions that were listed, the three. So keep them in mind while you're voting, unless you guys have something else you'd like to add. Okay, so we'll move on. Okay, question one. The use will not put an excess burden on roadways, utilities, and public facilities such as parks and schools. Dave?
Yes.
Marv?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Question two. The request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for the uses predominant area. Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Dave?
Yes.
Question three. The use in the opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and the environment. Groundwater, surface water, and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Question four. The use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purpose of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Myself, Clint is yes. Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Question five. The use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Okay, looks like we answered all the questions in the affirmative. So I guess at this time, I would obtain a motion to recommend approval with the conditions.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marv.
I would like to make that motion.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay. So motion made and seconded to recommend approval to the county board of commissioners with the three conditions. All in favor, say aye. Dave?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Myself, Clint is aye. Okay, we recommend approval to the county board of commissioners, and they'll look at this application on February 27th. You have any questions in between now and then? Talk to.
Could the wording on that be changed to short-term as far as the rental goes?
Yes.
We already talked to you.
Thank you.
And we didn't need to change the date, did we, on the condition for the sewer system?
You had discussed changing it, talked to it on the 31st, so that's the note that I had made.
Yep. Okay, so any questions between now and then, contact Amy or anybody at Land Services, and they can help you out.
Thank you, Alfred. Everything, appreciate it.
Good luck. Okay. Guess we have to approve the January 30th minutes. Did you guys get a chance to look them over?
Yeah.
Did you find any problems, Dave?
I moved that we accept as presented. No, nothing. I looked as hard as I could, but.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, motion made, seconded, approve the January 30th minutes. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes approved. I don't know any new business. Amy, you don't have any?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I do not have any new business.
Okay, I don't have no old business either. After we adjourn, we're going to kind of meet with the county board on a couple of things here, so.
I move that we adjourn.
What's that, Dave?
I move that we adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
John, seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned at seven thirty-seven.